It's 5:02. We do have a quorum of our board members present. So I would like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Finance to order. For the record, today is Tuesday, May 21st, 2024. We have attending in person Ms. Ayonisito, Ms. Pesky, Mrs. Trob, and Mr. Wright constituting our quorum. Before we begin the meeting, could we please stand and pledge the flag? All right, I am, we did a marathon meeting last night. So, and I know that we've got a marathon meeting coming up next week. So I'm going to try to be as brief as possible this evening. First item on the agenda, I will entertain a motion to open the meeting to the public.
It's moved.
I, oh, we have, Mr. Anderson is attending via Zoom. So I actually heard Mr. Wright and Mrs. Trob, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item two, I'll entertain a motion to accept the regular meeting minutes from April 16, 2024.
It's moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Trob.
Second.
Second by Ms. Pesky. Questions or comments on the minutes? No questions? I'll call it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Item B, to be, I'll entertain a motion to accept the special joint Board of Finance and Board of Education budget meeting minutes from April 23rd, 2024.
It's moved.
Thank you, Mr. Wright, and seconded by Mr. Anderson. Questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item two C, I'll entertain a motion to accept the public hearing minutes from April 23rd, 2024. Thank you, Mr. Wright.
Second.
And seconded by Mr. Anderson. Are there questions or comments on these minutes? Hearing none. All in favor? Any opposed? All right, you know, I just, I feel like I asked for the motion to open the meeting to the public, and then I just glazed over it. It's, for anybody that's watching, watching, it's because there's nobody in the audience except for our treasurer. So going into item number three. So this is an action that is required by the board. However, the way that the motion is worded here, I'm gonna, I'm gonna call it slightly different. So what I'm looking to, from the Board of Finance, is a vote to acknowledge the budget transfers and amendment requests for fiscal year '22, '23, as further described in the Manager of Budgets letter dated April 12th, 2024, pending City Council approval. So I'll call the motion, then I'll explain why.
Move for discussion.
Thank you. Moved by Mr. Anderson. Seconded by Mr. Wright. All right. So fiscal year '22, '23, as we know, obviously is almost a year ago. And I, I'm thinking, I keep hearing Mrs. Pesky ask about why we hadn't been doing budget transfers more recently. And I was explaining that the prior comptroller was of the mindset that she felt those end-of-year overages and, and over budget, under budget line items were more revealing or compelling. And so, none of those were put before the board shortly after the fiscal year ended. However, we're working on the audit now. Olivia, our deputy comptroller, has been absolutely instrumental in keeping us on task so that we can get that audit completed before June 30th. And reflecting on the request to see what those budget transfers are, we thought we would bring these to the Board of Finance in the event you had any questions or comments. So, questions or comments? These transfers have been done. They had to be done so that we could prepare for that audit.
Mayor, I did have a question on the transfer requests.
Yes.
I see how all of them are recorded on here, except for the $28,000 that came out of the comptroller account. That $28,000 is not reflected in these transfer requests. So I just want to make sure, was it just an oversight? Does the rest of them total out to the amounts that are in that column?
On the, for the FY '23, '22, '23?
The column that says "Transfer to Capital Grant Requests and Additional Expenses", and it starts with that $105,500, which, which is the total of the first seven line items. The next line item is 11, $11,000 is down in engineering. And then we get it. So we're missing that $28,000. I just want to make sure. It's just not, it's not reflected on this transfer request.
I get it. All right.
But I'm assuming it happened. In the comptroller, Department 7 comptroller, it says $28,000. But it's not on the transfer request total. The total is off on the bottom.
So...
I guess my question, if, if the $28,000 happened, that's fine. It's just not reflected in the letter. So I would just request that they updated the letter to reflect it, that's all. Or the $28,000 didn't happen, which is fine. And then we could just disregard it on this, on the sheet we received.
What is this? Was that, it was, it was part of?
Yeah, it was part of the, I don't know, if anybody printed that out, that was on, it was included. I don't know, I just printed out every page, and it was on there, and it was in that column. So I just wanted to double check. Because then on the bottom, the budget amendments are equal. What's, what's on that report?
So the total equals what's on the long sheet? Yeah, I know. This is torture. So, so the total is correct. It's just the itemization. It's missing a number, is what you're saying?
And I believe so. So if the $28,000 was done, I would just say reflect that in this letter. So that includes that $28,000, just so that they, they match, that's all. I don't have a question on why it was done. I just want to make sure we noted that it's not.
Yes, okay. All right. All right, other comments? I want to thank you for these. It made me feel so much better to see it on the agenda. And that's only just past practice. You know, it's not like I'm an accountant or anything. But it's good, I, I think it's good to see where it's come, in, in, in what we may need to budget more for or less for. And for any of those items, so the next budget, the next agenda item is, you know, where we're also looking at the current fiscal year. What are those items that were budgeted to be put into a capital reserve? Making sure that those happen early in the year, and you see those early in the year also. So those are, and again, credit goes to Erica, because she wanted to make sure that you were getting everything that you need. So... Any other questions on fiscal year '22, '23 budget amendments and transfer requests? And what we'll do is, we'll go through that, double-check it, amend it, and make sure that you get a copy so that you have them in your files. If there are no questions, I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So FY '23, '24. So this is the current fiscal year. I am looking for a motion to authorize budget transfers and amendment requests for fiscal year '23, '24, as further described in the Manager of Budgets letter dated March 28th, 2024. Again, this is pending Council approval.
I'll move for discussion.
Thank you, Mrs. Trob, and I heard Mr. Anderson. All right, the floor is open for questions. And not hearing any, I'm going to go ahead and call that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, item five, these are the performance reports. And on the agenda, it says a vote to accept the performance reports for the city, which are in your packet. But I did hand out to you as well this morning, or this afternoon, where's my day gone? Where's the month gone? The Board of Ed performance reports through April, that's April 30th, right, Erica? Okay. So while I'm looking for a motion for the city, I do want you to realize that you also have the Board of Ed performance reports. So motion to accept the performance reports for the city of Torrington? Thank you, Mr. Wright. Do I have a second?
Sure, second.
I heard Ms. Ayonisito. And the floor is open for questions.
These are, sorry, these, these acceptance are just acknowledging that we have received them. Would it make sense to amend the, the motion to include that we have received the Board of Eds as well?
Or we could do a second, yeah, we'll do a second motion. So we'll do a 5A, accept the performance reports for the city, and then I'll do a 5B. And it's, it certainly hasn't given you time to review it. But to your point, you're only acknowledging that you've received them.
Yeah.
So, all right, well then, if there are no questions on the city's budget performance report, I'll call that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now we'll do the 5B. And I don't need to add that to the agenda, do I? Should I? I should. Okay, all right. I know, really, we don't want to get called out on a technicality here. So I would need a motion to add section, or 5B, the acceptance of the Board of Education performance reports through April 30th. So this is to add it to the agenda. I see Mr. Anderson has made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Trob. All in favor? Any opposed? All right. And then the motion that I'd be looking for is a motion to accept the Board of Education's budget performance report through April 30th. Thank you, Ms. Pesky.
Second.
And a second by Mr. Anderson.
Second.
All right, we, any questions on this? I wouldn't be able to answer them, but...
No, thank you for doing that. Just because our city clerk's out of the country, we don't want to have her come back.
I know. They're always looking to trip me up, right?
This was a test. She's testable.
Yeah. So, all right, if there are no questions, I'll call that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, and then we'll move into item six. I will entertain a motion to consider business by the department heads. Thank you, Mr. Wright.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Trob. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So we have John Monks, the comptroller here. Anything to add this evening, Mr. Monks?
Yes, I just want to let the board know that the audit's going pretty well. We should meet our June deadline. We have training scheduled in this room here on July 30th and July 31st for the whole HR and accounting staff. New World is coming in for two days. Our new employees, our payroll person, and our accounts payable are both transitioning very well. And things, their transition's going very smoothly. That's what I wish to share.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Monks? And the other thing I would add is, this training that he's referring to is training on the New World system. And my hours and hours of research on the, the Internal Service Fund insurance issue brought me back to 2002, when the New World system was brought into the city of Torrington. And oh my goodness, that was a lot of angst. And so here we are celebrating 22 years of this software package. And it's nice to know that a whole new team is going to be trained on it. That's money well spent. I agree. Yeah. Mr. Barkley, anything from the Treasurer's office? Okay. Anything from the City Clerk's office? No? All right, well then, we're going to move into item seven, business by the mayor and members. Do I have a motion? Thank you, Ms. Trob.
Second.
And seconded by Ms. Ayonisito. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so I can start on the screen. Anything, Mr. Anderson?
Just a quick update on, on where we are in pulling together the final revisions of our budgets? Meaning that in a question, could you give us a quick update as to where we are in the process? I mean, June's coming around.
So you were cutting out, if you could ask again, and... Yeah, switch your mic?
He's signing this?
Any update on budget? Yes. So, yes, and I have a Level 2 budget book for the city departments here. I'll, I'll hand your copy over to Heather so she can get it to you. So last night, the City Council did meet with the Board of Safety at Level 2, where all of the budget cuts and amendments that occurred at that level were embedded. City Council then approved the other city departments and have handed this over to the Board of Finance at Level 2 for the joint meeting next week. That joint meeting is next Tuesday. Also, what we have for you and for the members that are sitting here at the dais, there's a two-page document, landscape, letter size, printed in red and black. That document is the work of the Budget Subcommittee. And I will tell you, they really did dive deep into the budgets, particularly those budgets that are quite large, and were able to affect $3.3 million in cuts, leaving a $4.8 million balance or increase over fiscal year '23, '24. So what will be discussed at the joint meeting with the City Council next week will be where we are at that $4 million increase. Anything else? Got it? Okay, Mr. Wright?
First of all, these two kind of coincide. If you put your heads together, they kind of work together.
They do. Sort of, kinda.
Okay. My question is, how do we stand, or what do we need to know about Mr. Corey's letter and Mr. Magistrally's response?
Okay, so, so with regard to the communication from the Board of Education, wherein Mr. Corey requested that our comptroller refund the Board of Education $51,000 because they were under the impression that they were done paying into the account. And in fact, they felt they had overpaid into the account. Erroneously, he was utilizing a net budgeting methodology in his calculation when the budget adoption was a gross expense to gross revenue. So we initiated the communication, as you all saw, from Judge Magistrally's letter. Mr. Corey responded, and we then reached out to request a joint meeting with the Board of Education, Board of Finance, and City Council. I think we offered four or five dates, and they were all declined with the last communication from the Board of Education that they, this is the end of the year, and they're, they won't be available until after June 13th for discussion.
So as kind of a follow-up, is that communication from Mr. Corey represent the board? And where, if any place, there's a superintendent and the finance director of the board stand?
I have not had any conversations with the superintendent or the business director in this regard. Neither has Mr. Monks, the comptroller. The, admittedly, it's a little bit of a mystery to me as well as to why this communication isn't coming through the superintendent or their business director. I did have a standing meeting with the superintendent for 1 o'clock this afternoon. I was fully anticipating that we were going to pick up the conversation since the communication between the board chair and Corporation Council. And there was a last-minute change in the superintendent's schedule, and he was unable to meet with me. So we are nowhere closer to resolution on this issue at this point in time. But I do realize that it is far too large of a number to leave in limbo five weeks before the fiscal year ends. And we did meet with the council yesterday to discuss what some of the options may be. And we will continue with utilizing the least restrictive is the word that keeps coming in my head. You know, the least onerous steps that we can to get resolution. And we will be engaging outside council to assist us with that.
So can we kind of pursue that, answer that question of who is represented by this letter? And what the, the professionals feel about it?
Yes. Yes. You know, the experts in their field, you know, your educational experts. You know, you have a, a business director that is in charge of a $78 million budget, who is an accountant. You know, it certainly would be nice to have that conversation with the accountant. And that, I believe, would be our first approach, is to hopefully engage the superintendent and business director. Mr. Corey did recommend that our communication go through their board attorney, Jessica Ritter, which we will certainly do. And hopefully, if we can get the lawyers and the experts in the room. I fully expect that the board chair, the board co-chairs would want to be a part of that dialogue. I did suggest to the council, if there are going to be elected officials in that conversation, it's not a full board, we're not looking at all of the Board of Ed, all of the Board of Finance. I did suggest to the council that I would like to engage at least one representative from the City Council and one representative from the Board of Finance to be a party of that. That way, there is a balance of representation from everybody. Yeah, absolutely. Mrs. Trob?
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I know.
So just a, and I apologize, just a follow-up on that, because I want to make sure I understand the letter and what he asks is, there are two components of the health insurance. One of it being the gross amount that gets put into their budget for health insurance premiums, which is approximately, I don't know what it is, $13?
$13.9, yes.
So that amount gets paid out every month from the Board of Ed into the Health Insurance Fund.
That's correct.
The other component is the amounts that get taken out of the teachers for their, for their percentage of pay that they do. And that amount is included in our revenue for the city, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so the, when they're saying on here that they're not going to pay the last monthly payment, they're talking about the payment going into the Health Insurance Fund.
That is correct.
That's what I'm talking about. And, and that the amount they're looking for remission to remit back is from the Health Insurance Fund.
Yes.
Did they pay the amount into the revenue account for the city?
So, to date, they have. There was a period of time in the fall where they were not. You know, they were withholding the premium cost share from the employee paychecks. And they were holding on to the checks for, I think it was a three-month period of time. We did reach out to them and inquired as to what the holdup was. Obviously, because that, as you, as you pointed out, goes into the revenue account. That's a significant deficit, a structural deficit in our budget if we don't receive those revenues in our general fund. So you're absolutely right. Those are the two. I think that we do need to check to make sure that those payroll deductions are being paid into the general fund. Because based on his letter and his math, it would indicate to me that they did not intend to give us those employee contributions.
And, and then my, my only other follow-up will go is, as a small business owner who pays my health insurance every month, if I don't pay a premium, they cancel me within 10 days. So, and, and so I'm not suggesting we go that route. I just want people to understand the seriousness of health insurance premiums. And although we're self-insured, it's still run through an insurance company. And, and obviously, we have been very generous, you know, giving back when the Health Insurance Fund does get large, and it helps the taxpayers, I hope, in the future. So, yeah, I, I obviously am, I want a positive resolution. I'm looking forward to getting to the bottom of it. But I, I think the insanity is doing the same thing over and over again, and I hope we're going to end the insanity.
So, yeah, no, I appreciate your comments. And I think particularly because you really did deep dive into this issue a few decades ago. Because we also found in our files some communication between you and Alice going through this, you know, just fully understanding the gross-to-gross budgeting. The, I think that what we found over the years is, every time there was a change in board leadership or after an election and the next budget cycle, it was learning all over again how it works. And we, we, you're right, it's a, it's a cycle, yeah. So I think a good governance document would help break that cycle. And fortunately, even though there is no MOU, no governance overriding document, there were well-documented minutes, and I think, Ms. Pesky, you were quoted in some of those minutes. So this was during your time on the Board of Education. That, that, that does set a legal precedence. It was established through joint meetings and voted on and approved by the board. And as you've seen in the correspondence, that went between State Department of Education, the Board of Finance, and, excuse me, the Board of Education Business Director and the City Comptroller. There was a clear understanding of what the methodology for budgeting was. So I think hopefully we can re-educate and find this common ground with regard to that final installment, and make sure that those premium cost share checks are in fact being deposited into the general fund. Ms. Pesky?
Yes, Mayor. In light of the fact that we're going to be setting the mil rate in, in two weeks, is there any usefulness in us knowing where we are with the ARPA funds so that if there were something that we were able to, some money that hasn't been expended, and since we have to make sure we uncover that by, by December 31st, that perhaps we could use these, the, the cuts that have already been made are tough, and the ones that would still left to be made with the kind of increases that we're looking at here are even tougher. So if there was anything that we could use those for, I understand it's a one-time, would be a one-time expense. But it would be a one-time that we don't, and if we do it strategically, it would be something that, it's not operating, it's not something that we have to replace again next year. But it would be something that we could do with it to off, perhaps offset some of these very negative, I, I think, cuts that are going to need to be made.
An excellent suggestion. We'll definitely look at those ARPA funds, particularly any of the community impact grants that haven't been expended, and where we are with any of the city projects. And see if there's any way we can reassign those funds to cover any of the capital expenses that get cut. I think, as you know, every time we dip our toe into the fund balance or the Internal Service Fund, for those, what I still affectionately refer to as the one-time revenues, we do create that structural deficit. But doing so in a way that is tied to capital is a way to mitigate that. So thank you, I appreciate that recommendation. So thank you, I appreciate that recommendation.
And I still haven't, I did not receive any communication back from the auditors regarding any suggestions that they have for the governance document and what other communities do in cities and towns in terms of gross-to-gross, gross-to-net, that whole issue?
Yes.
That are, well, and communities that are self-funded.
Yes. And I did not either. However, I do have a call with, we have a call with the auditor on Friday, I believe. I'll ask again. In the meantime, Lindberg and Ripple is the firm that does all of our consulting. And I also reached out to Joe Spurgeon and asked him if there were governance documents that he is aware of, and he did send me a number of samples. So I think Mr. Anderson at the last meeting suggested that this is something that we would prioritize and have in place as soon as possible. We'll continue to work towards that end. And I will inquire about the other municipalities and gross-to-gross and/or a net budgeting. And if there's any, an appetite from the auditor's perspective for us to change that methodology just because, you know, is, usually when you change your budgeting practices, there is a reason. In 2002, the reason was the Board of Education had significantly under-projected what those revenues were going to be. So their expense line items were, you know, smaller, the expense line items, you know, ended up being overrun, and there were significant budget issues that needed to be addressed. So that was the reason, the auditor suggested that you do a gross budget and your revenues are projected in the general fund. That way, your expense budget isn't blown out of the water because of a miscalculation. You know, certainly if there's an under-projection or an over-projection of those revenues, we would deal with it in the general fund versus in the Board of Education's operating budget. Or the city's operating budget for that matter. I think the other reason that strategy was implemented is it does, in fact, give you a true cost of government services. You know, when we talk about, you know, our per pupil expenditures, or, you know, what is the real cost of our street departments, you know, all of those salaries and benefits are a part of those expenses. So it does give you those true costs. So there's a lot of good reasons why GAAP recommends and prefers gross-to-gross budgeting. And when I read through the correspondence, that happened in 2002, I do know that the Board of Education reached out to the State Department of Education because this obviously was going to impact their MBR. And this is what's going on here. It is about the MBR. You know, you net those premium cost share in your expense line item. That means you can move, you know, $1.8 million into another line item without impacting your MBR. So I would also, in our strategy and our discussions with the Board of Education, want to reach out to the state to get clarification. If a change in your budget methodology does not change what you're spending on your educational expenses, it only impacts this one line item, which is the insurance costs, would we be able to reduce the MBR as a result of that? So it's a complicated problem, and I'm sure there is a solution somewhere. All right, Ms. Inosito, anything?
So we had talked about educating, you know, with the consultants that we had, and we had tried to get a meeting together. Where does that stand? Or is it just up in the air at this point?
Up in the air from our last communication from the board secretary until after June 13th. Which honestly is, when we talk about the governance document, that's all fine. If we talk about, you know, the clear understanding of, you know, chain of command and stuff like that, that's all fine. But in my humble opinion, June 13th is too late for us to resolve the expenditure issues. And very honestly, if there's a recommendation or an appetite to change our methodology for budgeting those expenses to a net budgeting, I need to know that. So when we present it to the Board of Finance, it would be part of the budget adaption. So we are under the gun on this one, to be honest with you. And we'll keep our, we'll keep pushing forward to get as...
Okay.
Solid answers as we can.
I would say that... I apologize. I would say that the June 13th for governance things is fine, but it's going to be very, very difficult to accept or back any proposed budget if we don't have everybody at the table to talk about it. There's no chance that we're going to change our budgeting methodology with days or weeks ahead. That's a years-long proposition. And the gross budgeting conversation, we're talking about the health insurance now, but we have to keep an eye on, I don't want to call it a creeping precedent. I did notice, and a few of us have pointed out, a few other items seem to be presented in the current budget and were in last year's as well, where we're accepting salaries, we're accepting positions, but in the operating budget, they're already offset by an anticipated grant. And I would really like to see, both for city and Board of Ed, to have the actual operating expenditures as they are. The revenues need to be considered separately. And we can't be picking and choosing, we're going to reduce this year's ask because we have this grant coming in. Grants are revenue, that's a separate conversation. So I just don't want to see that practice, like I said, to use the word creep, creeping in, it doesn't paint a good, clear picture of what we're spending.
Yeah. And particularly in those largest expenses, I think that the other large expense in all of the communication that was occurring back in 2002, it was also the excess cost for special education that was also being budgeted net. And those revenues came in significantly lower. And listen, that still happens. I think it was four years ago, maybe five years ago, the Board of Education did under-project, they, excuse me, over-projected the revenue for premium cost share. We adapted a budget expecting to receive $400,000 more than we did. And fortunately, it was discovered early enough in the year that the Board of Education was able to do some mitigation factors. But it does happen. It's not like, oh, this never happens, why are we worrying about it? It does happen. And if nothing else, what did we learn with the pandemic? When everybody was sent home and businesses were shuttered, you know, fortunately, our teachers were not laid off, our city staff were not laid off, and those premium cost shares were still coming in. Because if the payroll hadn't been happening and those premium cost shares hadn't been coming in, we still would have been obligated to pay those medical expenses that were occurring. So there's a lot of real good reasons why we budget this the way that we do. But I am certainly open to any best practices and the opinions of people that are far more expert in this field than I am. So I think the only thing that I would add is, there is, to Mr. Wright's point, there is a legal-sized document that I handed out, this again, thank you, Erica, is sort of that, you know, that timeline for each of the departments, looking at fiscal year '24 is the first column, level-one, these were the department head requests, I always call this the wishlist. And then Subcommittee Review is level-two, that's the third column. And as you can see, in level-one, the department head requests were $75,257,703. And after meeting with the department heads, the Budget Subcommittee was able to find the $3.3 million bringing the current request to $71,834,962. This is a $4,816,857 bump over fiscal year '24. However, the reason I greatly appreciated this report that Erica dropped on my desk this morning is of that $4.8 million, if you run your finger up to the bottom third of the page for bond redemption and debt interest, you see that 2.1 million of that 4.8 is debt service. So as we work our way through budget deliberations, I think it's important for us to keep that number in mind, because those are obviously expenses that the taxpayers agree to. However, they are certainly impacting other departments. Where we stand right now in total, between the Board of Education's request, which is $7,857,250 over fiscal year '24, the city's request is standing at 38% of that total, and the Board of Education's request is at 62%. So more work to do, because even with revenues, a $12 million bump over fiscal year '24 is going to significantly impact taxpayers. So, and just to add also, the Budget Subcommittee felt very strongly, you know, we are one year away from the revale. Revale happens October 1, 2024, and the Budget Subcommittee felt that if we could hold the line with the mil rate this year, next year, if we get that bump in the grand list, it will be much more manageable to look at a mil rate increase. And that still keeps us away from that dangerous 50 that we're hovering near. And I don't mean to speak for the Budget Subcommittee, but Mrs. Trabb and Ms. Pesky were a part of that conversation. All right, if there are no other questions or comments or business before the board, I gave you a lot to read and digest. So happy Memorial Day weekend to all of you, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Ms. Inosito, Mr. Wright, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
I thought it was Memorial Day.
I know.
Isn't that crazy?